In arrears.
Do I have a second and emotion? Emotion fails. Let's go on.
Think we're clear, we'll just leave it at 5%. The number two.
Joe?
Go ahead.
We've just failed everything that we've voted on. And everything that we came up with. All right. We know that if somebody has a bill over $100 and pays $1 on it, or one cent on it, he can get his water to stay on. Now, we have to do something about that, first of all, before we decide to do anything about raising the water rate, the water, adding on, no.
I think that's in the other proposals. Okay.
I recommend.
Well, what Alderman Coles was referring to is number two, which I was just gonna go into.
Yeah.
The proper procedure is you get a motion on the floor, and then there's discussion on the motion. You may not even need staff's comments if there's unanimity on the council. But you have nothing on the floor until the motion is made. So Alderman Coles is correct if he wants to make his motion to approve staff's recommendation on item two.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Any discussions?
Mr. Newville? I got a question for you, Brett. I understand the $100, they pay so much, they get it under $100, and they're still sliding away with one month. So, when this happens, basically you're charging them the $100, you're turning off the water, and then there's a turn-on fee as well?
No water turn-off.
No, this is between the time that we send out the shut-off notice and before they get shut off. If they pay their balance below $100, they will avoid getting shut off.
Right. But you're trying to close a loophole here is what, on the second one, correct?
Correct, and the loophole is that you can pay your balance down to 99 and get off the shut-off list. The staff's opinion is that if you get a notice for being over $100 late in your water bill, you should have to pay the balance down to zero.
Right, that's what we're saying here, that's where we're voting, that's what Joe's motion is.
Yes.
But they don't, at this point, they're not getting shut off, they just have to pay, pay their balance down to zero.
No, down below 100 currently.
No, no, currently, but if we pass this motion, they have to pay everything off?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's why I just wanted clarification.
Okay. Does everyone understand that one? There's a motion on the floor, there's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
At this point, we're gonna go to, we're gonna go to 2A, I guess, if you will. It's not on here, and I do apologize for that, but subsequent to sending this out, I had discussions with Council Dixon and Bond about what you see on the screen there. Ian?
Just saying on here.
The top half of this is referring to the 28-day notice that we send off and the seven-day notice that we send out. And there was some discussion, Mr. Amrumis interpreted it one way, we interpreted another way, I had legal review it, and their explanation of it is that it's somewhat indiscernible and that the first part contradicts itself. So it's the opinion of Attorneys Bond and Dixon that just the top half of this just needs a text amendment to clarify what we're actually doing and is actually in a little plainer language than what it currently is. So we're not actually changing any procedure or anything to that effect, we're just amending the text to be clearer and more understandable. The second half of this is the $100 issue that you just voted on, but the top half is a text amendment that Attorneys Bond and Dixon would like to see us get cleaned up.
Any questions on that?
So where's your proposed changes?
Well, if you read the first, what is it, three or four sentences? And if you read it, you know, "Final Notice of Such Delinquency Shall Be Sent, User Charge, Event Accountant May Link For An Additional 28 Days," which includes the final notice period. "Such Notice Shall Also Include A Statement That Service Shall Be Terminated And Discontinued Without Further Notice After Seven Days." Well, the 28-day notice is supposed to include the final notice period, but it's also supposed to include a caveat that there's yet another final notice period. So there's two final notice periods referenced in the top half of that. We just want to clarify what the actual final notice period is, which is that seven-day notice, not the 28-day notice. So we just basically want to clean that language up a little bit.
Okay, so does this verbiage right now currently give the end user like three full months instead of two and a half? Is that what the current verbiage does?
Verbiage still gives them that 70 days, it's just a little ambiguous as to where which notice is truly the final notice.
Okay.
Mr. Newville?
With this motion right there, are we talking about now the turn-on fees here?
No, totally separate.
This is another separate issue?
Yeah.
Motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Other question?
The only reason why I'm not gonna support this is because I didn't support it originally when we changed it. I've never been in favor of having such a tight window, so I'm gonna vote no when we vote, that's all I want to say, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Oh, could we?
I didn't hear Dan.
Did it pass or fail? I don't know what the...
I didn't hear Dan.
I didn't hear...
It passed, I think there were two appositions.
Motion pass. Okay. I believe that's it. Items for future meetings.
We still have two more.
Two more items.
Number three. I tried. I tried. All right. Brad, number three.
All right, item three is request to increase the turn-on fee or the reconnection fee for repeat offenders. And as you'll see in the narrative of the memo, when we went back and we're looking at the shut-off list, we noticed that approximately 20 people show up on every list, or every other list. We went back and Ms. Hoffman counted, we shut off some people last year, was it five times? I think we shut one person off six times, and we only shut off six times a year, and they were shut off every time. We have a number of people that were shut off two and three times. And so in keeping with the thought that, you know, we're not trying to hit the occasional person that might have lost their job or whatever, that's why we're leaving the first time for somebody who may have just hit a bit of bad luck the same, and trying to, I guess you call it, you know, behavior modification on the people that we shut off every single time we go through. And bear in mind, these people, they know the game, I mean, you know, Ms. Hoffman jokes, she knows how many kids they have, she knows where they work, she knows, you know, what happens with their family, their grandkids, and everything else. I mean, we know the people, and they know the system, and yet, nothing matters to them. It doesn't change their behavior. So this is just in an attempt to get that number from having our city service guys shut off 34, 38, and 36 properties every other month to try and curb some of the repeat offenders and get that number down to save staff time both in our office and also in Mr. Kramer's office.
I make a motion to approve. Sir, a second? All in favor? Any questions? Go ahead.
Mr. Wilson, I mentioned to you also about this previously, that I think that there are circumstances in life where people would be faced with a shut-off due to financial or emotional or vacations or some reason beyond their control, and that's why I had asked if you could amend the idea to allow for one free lifetime turn-on. Once in a lifetime. A person hears 20 years, he only gets it once, because anybody could have one accident or one emergency.
You know, where I worked before I came here, we had a situation, the shut-off window was 75 days until you got shut off, and we had a gentleman come in who was shut off, and he had a stack full of papers. And he had to go into the hospital on, the bills were due on the 25th, he went in the hospital on the 23rd of the month the bill was due, and through a series of unfortunate events for him, I think it was heart attack, cancer, and I don't know, blood clots and something else, he was in the hospital for almost seven weeks. And he came in with his file, his doctor notes and everything else, and we looked at it and said, you know, that's just a bad luck. And so we turned him on, we didn't charge him anything, and we waived all the late fees. You know, we have, up until the time that they get the seven-day notice, they can call us at any time, set up a payment plan with Ms. Hoffman, there are occasions where we don't grant a payment plan, for example, we had one person call and want a payment plan, since last January, they had paid us three times. Not necessarily the prime candidate for that, but the person that's just down on their luck, we do offer payment plans too. The key to all of this, of avoiding any of these fees and getting shut off, is for the resident to call us. If they call us and tell us they have a problem, we'll work with them, we'll put off the shut-off. You know, they have 60 days, they have over two months to pick up the phone and call us. I don't know, our feeling is if they pick up the phone and call us, we'll work with them. If they don't, you had two and a half months.
Well, based on your example, that's something that you would have given a free turn-on. I just want to put in writing that we are a compassionate city, and that there can be one free lifetime turn-on with extenuating circumstances. I would like to add an amendment to, endorsement to your amendment, will you accept it?
No. Christine?
The part that I'd like to see changed is for the third turn-on notice, it would be $300, and then for any thereafter, $500. You know, I'm okay with boosting it the first time through at 150, because the deterrent, that sort of thing, and, you know, gives that shock factor to the repeat offender. I really don't think we're gonna collect many $300 fees, because this is the third time we're going through the process, it's just gonna go delinquent, and we're just gonna... I say let's avoid the 300 to 500 and just keep it flat at 150 each time thereafter. If we all agreed on that, would you be able to implement that? It'll be 75 the first time, 150 thereafter?
There's a motion on the floor, there's a second motion. I would amend my motion for that, does secondary agree?
No.
No. Okay. So then we'll go with the motion on the floor. A roll call vote, please.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
No.
Alderman Lewitan?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item?
The last one, I'll say is more for the billing department than for the finance department. When a property has been without water, a residential property has been without water for more than three business days, the code enforcement officer in the billing department goes and posts the house as uninhabitable due to unsanitary conditions. It takes him about two hours to do a property, and this last time we had five that he had to do, the time before that, I think he had 10 he had to do, and it took him almost two full days to do that. You know, and that's taking him away from going out and enforcing other things in town, you know, such as the cars, weeds, I don't really know what else falls under the code enforcement purview, but, you know, the other things that he's supposed to do, he's taken away from to do this, so that's taken away from his ability to go out and levy, you know, fines and try and clean up the city, the look of the city, get the grass mowed, et cetera, and we're not getting anything back for all of his time to post these properties as uninhabitable, and we're losing the chance for him to go out and assess fees to clean up the look of the town, so it's trying to fill the void there.
I'll tell you one thing, I won't support this one. That's my opinion.
Right now, we don't charge anything, is what you're saying, right? This was...
Correct.
Alma Shockey?
I make a motion to follow staff's recommendation and have a $100 posting fee per property.
Do I have a second and motion?
I'll second that.
Questions? Christine Winger?
I just want to state, the only, one of the only reasons I'm not gonna support this, it's not that it's due to the way it's written or anything like that, I think this is a fine piece of work put together, this is actually the most clear piece of work I've ever seen, and I've been here for five and a half years, looking at the timeline, looking at items 1 through 12, everything is laid out perfect, so whatever hasn't passed, I suggest that you put on a shelf and bring it back next year when we do this again, because the unfortunate thing is, is that we are on very hard economic times. Several people are losing their jobs, we have people out of work, struggling to make ends meet, and I can't see shutting anyone off right now. I just cannot see it, it's like throwing someone out of their home, it's like doing a foreclosure almost, and right now, my understanding is that's not happening, people aren't getting thrown out constantly anymore, and I feel the same way by doing a shut-off, because literally they have a couple days to either pay it or it's uninhabitable. So I cannot see posting uninhabitable and keeping water off for longer than however long it is, two, three days. So that's why I'm not gonna support it, and I just want to explain that before we vote on this. Thank you.
Mr. Coles?
Most of the signs that Mr. Johnson puts on are houses that are unoccupied anyway most of the time, so, I mean, it's hard for us to, it's gonna be hard for us to collect it, even though I voted for it, but I think that if somebody, say buys the house, they have to have the house inspected anyway, so it goes in with the price of the inspection. That's what, that's why I second it.
Go ahead, Brett.
Real quick, you know, most of the properties that get posted by code enforcement now don't get turned back on. They, and we get a call, Ms. Hoffman gets a call, six months later that it's Coldwell Banker, Countrywide, Bank of America, hey, we're now the owner of the property, what do we have to pay to get it turned on? And I agree with you both, and I understand your position too, but most, the vast majority, probably 99% of the houses that get posted wind up in the property of the bank, and we find that out once down the road. Very rarely in the last six months have we posted a house that's actually been turned back on by the current property owner. Most of them are foreclosures or bankruptcies or something to that effect.
Go ahead.
Also, in regards to what Alderman Winger said, I think it's important to realize that what Brad had mentioned earlier is we do offer them payment plans, and especially if they're having some type of financial hardship, especially in what's going on right now with the economy, they have every chance to call Nicole or Ms. Hoffman, and she also works to their best interest, she asks them, what can you pay? And she will even tell them, take some time, look at your financial situation, tell me what's best for you, and she really does work hard with them to help them through this time. And when I had called some of our surrounding municipalities, a lot of them do not even touch payment plans, it's not even an option unless there is some catastrophic leak or backfilling, but I think just with that, it is important to realize that we do try and offer compassion, especially now in what's going on with our financial situation.
Well, then along those lines, like I could see myself supporting it, but with the inclusion that there would be the city staff person, you know, before posting and before shut-off, visiting the homeowner, actually going there and trying to see the situation, is the home evacuated already? Well, then that's one circumstance, but at least trying to make a contact with the people that live there, instead of waiting on them to call us, I know we're sending them notices, but, you know, like at least reaching out physically, you know, personally.
Mr. Newville?
Brad, this posting fee, okay, it's $100. Let's say you don't charge the posting fee and Coldwell Banker calls you, the house is inspected before anything's turned on, do we have inspection fees that are already tacked on besides the $100? I mean, are we doing $100 and then there's another $150 for the inspectors to go out and all that stuff? Make sure the house is okay? Do you know, I mean, it's like we're double billing then.
I don't believe...
We don't do inspections.
I don't want to fee everybody to death.
I don't believe that our billing department goes out and inspects these homes once they're posted and they want to get turned back on, that's incumbent upon the person looking to purchase or inhabit the house at that point, so I don't believe there's any fees from the billing department in that regard.
Okay. Shockey, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the last paragraph sums it up. The goal is to reduce the number of notices being sent out, and ultimately the number of shut-offs saves staff time and resources can be used for other projects. Because of that, I think we should have a fee, I mean, I see where we caught somebody carrying buckets of water from one house to another one that had the water shut off so they wouldn't have to pay the bill. It gets ridiculous what people will go through to let a few dollars, and it's costing the rest of the residents. Everybody else is paying for these people who are not paying the right way. So I think they need to know that they're gonna have a fine or something, so that's why I made the motion to take staff recommendation and approve it.
Any other discussion on that?
One more thing.
Christine?
Brad, why would you, what is your thought on why people don't call? Could it be a language barrier, could it be that they can't read what we're sending them? I mean, is it something like that, or what is your hunch on why people don't call?
Embarrassed?
Maybe.
Yeah, kind of what you just muttered there, I think maybe one of the biggest things is embarrassment, they don't want to admit that they have a problem.
Right.
I mean, I hate to sound like a 12-step program here, but, you know, I think that's probably one of the biggest things. Yeah, I mean, the language barrier, I mean, you know, we have someone in the police department that speaks fluent Polish, we have somebody in the building department that speaks fluent Spanish, and if anybody speaks a language other than that and needs assistance, we can always take them to the PD and use the language line, you get a translator on the phone, so I don't, I don't know, but my best guess would either be embarrassment, you know, not wanting to admit that, or, I don't know, maybe a little bit of self-pride that they think they can have it resolved before it gets too far down the road. Because, you know, if you ever get in trouble, say, no, I can fix this, I can work my way out of this, and they keep trying to do that, and unfortunately, sometimes they just don't catch up.
Okay, and how many have we had to do in the past year of actually posting the notice and moving people out? Were there any that actually had to move out in the past year, would you say? Okay. Okay.
Are they gonna bite you?
Once the house was posted, then they would come in and pay.
Okay. Okay.
I have a motion on the floor, I have a second, a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Wesley?
No.
Alderman Police?
No.
Alderman Lewitan?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Hello?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
That passes. Nothing else?
Yeah. I have a question.
It's already discussed, unless you got stuff for future meeting.
Right, stuff for future meeting.
Okay, well, let's...
You didn't discuss in here, and I know you've discussed it with me, third-party billings, they have to be handled differently. When people are paying an association or a builder, and they're paying their association dues on time, and the builder is not transmitting the water bill to the water department, then certain cutoffs are gonna happen, and I think that you should come up with something where the city water department takes preemption and takes the collections for the dues until the water bills are paid, and then vice versa, where you have a tenant who doesn't notify a landlord that he's deficient before you have a shut-off, you contact the landlord in those cases.
That's item in future meetings.
Items for future meetings.
I mean, I'm not going to get into that tonight.
The one, I'll certainly bring that up, and that one, if we're getting into disputes between homeowners associations and landlords and stuff, I have to run that one through legal, I don't know if we have the standing to do that.
Sorry to do that.
Your comment about notifying landlords, every landlord that we know about receives a copy of their tenant's bill and receives a copy of every shut-off notice that they receive, so the landlords are duly informed of what's going on with their property at all times.
Okay, that's, we could work on that, future meetings. Any other items for future meeting? Red flag rule 2009, anything else? I will be bringing something to you guys in the next committee meeting about giving authorization for the finance department of, and the city management to give authorization to pay some bills ahead of time, due to the fact that we don't get nailed with finance charges because of the way it's coming in, so I will bring that to the future meeting. I make a motion adjourned?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Call to order, Public Health Safety and Judicial Committee, roll call is same as it was last meeting, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of January 8, 2009.
So move.
Here, second?
General...
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Report and recommendation of squad car replacement program, FY09-10. In order to take the state's purchase price, the police department must order the vehicles in February of 2009 for delivery in May 1st of 2009, so we request a replacement of the following cars. Squad cars, 405, 2005 Crown Vic with 59,000 miles. Now, if you're wondering why it only has 59,000 miles, because this car is used with several different people, and that, that's the reason why that car gets...